Hi and welcome back to WCAT's continuing coverage of the Wakefield Town election. We are still doing Wakefield School Committee candidates and we have what I will call one of the longest-serving members of our community in a variety of ways, Tom Markham. But before we get to the interview, I want to start, as I have been starting all these, by saying thank you to WCAT and Ian McDermott, who is the one who actually organizes this. I'm lucky enough to get the credit by being in front of the camera, but Ian, who you can't see, who's cutting in front of the camera on the other side, is the one who calls everybody, organizes the schedules, coordinates people being here, and coordinates these interviews when there's really no election. There's no reason to be doing this, other than Ian and the staff at WCAT want to make sure that Wakefield gets to meet their elected representatives and elected officials. So again, thank you to Ian and WCAT. And with that said, I will start with one of the most difficult questions we have for my good friend and candidate, Thomas Markham. Tom, can you look at that camera, introduce yourself, and tell people why they should vote for you? You only need one vote, so you really only have to convince one person. So Tom, welcome, and yeah, if you could just introduce yourself to the camera.
Well, thank you, Anthony, and let me echo the sentiment about thanking WCAT and Ian and everyone that goes into making the town government exposed and making it available and accessible. So I think these type of forums, whether it's an active campaign or whether they're not, it's not hotly contested. It's important, as you said, to have exposure and to have an exchange between voters and candidates. So I agree. Thank you. So I guess you wanted me to look into the camera, so thank you again for the opportunity to be here. Thank you to the voters and the citizens and the families over the years who have put some faith and confidence in allowing me to serve. I think throughout the course of my time, but really across really any board, I think having experience is a critical piece of the work. I think having a combination, really, of experienced voices around the table with voices that bring some new ideas that allow some work to flourish, to have an appreciation of what's going on actively in the schools today. And I think that fine combination of experience and staying crisp and staying on top of the issues and staying engaged in the community, I think, is one of the things that I enjoy the most and hopefully friends and supporters would see that.
No, thank you, Tom. And I'll start, again, how I've started all these, is there is no scientific method to how I get these questions. I literally just ask friends and family. And off there, right before we started, I was telling Tom, and I said this with the interview with Kevin, you know, town council, the issues seem to be very consistent. School committee was somewhat more all over the place, but I think it's because of the wide array of issues you deal with and the passions people have about their children, obviously.
Of course.
But I'll start with the one that did seem to come up the most. There were two that came up, I would say, more consistently. And the first, probably because it's been in the news, is this concern about the Department of Education potentially being abolished by the Trump administration. If you've watched school committee meetings, or if you just read The Globe or any news, watched any news, you see that the potential impacts of the state is, I think they said, over $100 million. Here in Wakefield, we look at teacher training programs that are probably federally funded, as well as the increase in multilingual learners that probably relies on federal funds. And you know, I can speak to the Wakefield and Stonemont Boys and Girls Club. We were just told that a grant we applied for for food through the USDA was canceled. We weren't denied the grant, we weren't approved for the grant, they just said, "We're not doing the grant anymore." So I guess the concern a lot of people have is, will this have an impact on the Wakefield school system? If you think it will, what are some of the things you think we should be doing as a town and on the school committee to prepare for that impact?
Well, that's a hefty question.
Yeah, and by the way, if you could answer in 30 seconds.
30 seconds? 30 seconds? I'm not sure I can do that. So I think that it's a real concern and it's very troubling to think that there would be an abrupt halt to the Federal Department of Education and all the type of things that the Department of Education supports across all 50 states and across every school district in the country. The type of things that the Trump administration and those that support the Trump administration are saying is this all about, you know, local control sort of thing, and let the states run it, let the communities run it. The reality of that is what is most troubling, because the local control, states are running, you know, education, states and communities. And here at the Wakefield School Committee, we are making decisions about what curriculum expectations that we have, how we're going to support the students even as a state and as a community. So the type of rhetoric that says, "We'll just kick it back to the states," is irresponsible in its messaging. That's the first thing that's concerning. The second thing that's concerning, what the Department of Education federally truly does in support of teaching and learning locally, is through federal grants and the support of federal dollars. And the three biggest needs that we have, the three biggest inputs of federal dollars for students with disabilities, students with special needs, and that would be an extraordinary loss. Secondly, we get a Title I funding, which is literacy programming, both for students that are on IEPs versus, and as well as students who aren't. So the loss of a Title I and illiteracy funding would be dramatic. Thirdly, using the example that you used with the Boys and Girls Club, the federal standards around free and reduced lunch programming. As we know, since the COVID days, lunch has been, you know, school lunch has been 100% subsidized and supported through both state and federal relationships. So those are dramatic potential losses of revenue coming into Wakefield. If we were to realize any of those things, and what would the budget impact be? It would be hundreds of millions of dollars over the course of time, and certainly millions of dollars in the course of even one or two years. Certainly, we have an obligation, a moral, ethical, and legal obligation under Massachusetts law, to provide special education programming. We would need to find a way to make sure that those services and supports were still in place. That's the first thing that we'd have to do. We would wind up, on the free and reduced lunch piece on the school lunch, we would wind up, that would look very dramatically different. We'd have to go back to the days, likely, of charging for school lunch and breakfast, which would see a decline in participation. Lots of dramatic things happening. Is it a real concern? It is. And let's hope that Congress and the courts take their role as co-equal branches of government to not let that happen.
No, and well, and it kind of segues into the next point, because one of the issues that came up, probably because it's just so obvious in all our neighboring towns. So Stonemont, I think on Tuesday, this Tuesday, has a $14 million override. Lynnfield, I think, is doing a $5 million override. North Andover is about to lay off 40 teachers. I think Redding and Melrose just had overrides that did not pass. It's either Redding or North Redding, I'm not 100% sure. But the reason I bring this up is, one of those issues that came up was, do you foresee and would you support, if necessary, an override for our school systems? And what have you done? I guess this is probably a softball one. I'm trying to ask it in a very challenging way, but there's really not, like, you know, why do you think Wakefield doesn't need an override right now, where all our neighbors seem to be doing an override? Which I feel for incumbents, that's such a layup question, like, hey, why aren't, you know, so...
You people are doing such a great job. Tell us why.
But I want, I think it's a fair, I'm trying to figure out a way to bring it up, but I think it is a point to recognize. Or maybe your point is, hey, no, we do need an override, I don't know why we're doing it. But you know, what are we doing differently than those towns? And should people be concerned that maybe Wakefield could be one of those towns in the near future?
So I can't speak with any specificity around what's going on in those school departments in the other towns, nor within the municipal government. So I certainly can't lay claim to how we're different than they are. But the fact that the types of overrides and the volume of overrides that are being asked for really do set us apart. I don't foresee a need, nor would I intend to support an operational override anytime soon. I think that, you know, as the fiscal times continue to get more challenging, and more challenging right now because of all the unknowns. I mean, the greatest thing that the Trump administration is bringing to the table is more and more unknowns. Lots of rhetoric, lots of non-answers, but lots of misinformation. If that's the direction that the economy is going, we would need to live within our means even more so than we do now. I think we have, one of the things that we are doing well between the school department and the school committee and the town hall, is the collaborative relationships that we have. It is not lost on the school committee, and I believe it's not lost on the town administrator and town council and the town finance committee, that the collaboration that we have is essential to keeping the town strong and vibrant and fiscally healthy. We are in an incredibly good place with our fiscal health, having a lot to do with the solid administrative hand for the last decade for our town administrator, Mr. Mayo. That can't go unstated as not a part of this mix. I think that we listen to each other as three boards, the school committee, town council, and finance committee. We listen to each other, we react to the things that are going on in the community. One of the things that we like, what we say often around the school committee table is, you know, so goes the town, so goes all of us. To think that we're, while we're an independently elected board and manage under, you know, state laws and town bylaws and such, we need to be collaborative and continue to do that. And I think that speaks a lot to why we're as healthy as we are.
No, sure, I will say, I think the relationship between all the boards is probably the best I've seen in a very, very long time. Because people have to remember, it's not that long ago when there was some combativeness between the boards. You don't see that as much anymore, which I think is a good thing. So I'm going to segue to, I would say, more specific issues.
Sure.
And again, they tend to focus on the younger population, and a part of that could just simply be, that's where I am most, that's where I am in my life, with my five-year-old and one-year-old. So let's go to the one that I hear about is contract negotiations. So Tom, I'd love to get your opinion on, you know, just kind of your general feelings about negotiating and what kind of thought process you bring into negotiating contracts. And then specifically, we'd love, the one I heard about when I was trying to survey questions was about our parrots, being probably the most obvious contract negotiation going on right now. Now, what I will say in front of the cameras is, obviously, negotiations, what people don't realize is the school committee members, there's only so much you're allowed to say. But could you give people kind of your general thoughts on what you feel going into negotiations we should be doing as a community? And then, so kind of elaborate maybe specifically on the paraprofessionals?
Sure. Well, in very broad strokes, as a philosophical matter, I think that the, and I feel as a value to my core, really, is that, you know, the teachers and the educators and the staff at all levels that we put, that are student-facing staff that serves students and families, we need to make sure that we, as an employer, provide a competitive wage, provide a strong and reliable and safe and welcoming, you know, work environment that people look forward every morning to get up and to coming to. Even on the most challenging of days, we have an extraordinary staff of teachers and paraprofessionals and food service workers and clerical support staff and custodians. And it's, I mean, we are talking about the parrots, because they're paraprofessionals, because that's what's in the news right now. But we're also negotiating with our five other, you know, union groups as well, represented, you know, differently, not as licensed professional educators, but nonetheless, provide an important day to the students. So we need to provide a competitive wage, we need to have an aggressive enough and affordable enough salary schedule that we can attract people here and train them well and retain them for years. We want a long-serving staff in Wakefield, and I think over the years, even going back to the Middle Ages, when you were on the school committee. You recall how well and how many people have some strong tenure in Wakefield, because it's a great place to work, it's a great place to live, it's a great community to be part of. So with that, as sort of the general backdrop, our ability to negotiate in good faith, and our ability to negotiate within the balance of what is affordable, recognizing that most of the resources need to be put into quality educators, that we can have all the brand-new buildings and all the latest technology and everything that we can afford, but if we don't have quality teaching and learning going on in a classroom, or we don't have quality coaching and support staff, we don't have quality counseling, anyone that is a student-facing staff member deserves a fair and competitive wage. And that's what we should be working toward, and that's frankly what we are working toward. We've been negotiating well with the paraprofessional group, so-called there, and we're meeting this afternoon, actually, that's our next session. So there's a lot of good things happening, and I look forward to a good contract.
Now, staying on the trend on things in the news right now, the other big issue is start times.
Oh, yeah.
Specifically in Wakefield. I will tell you, when I started even just talking to my nieces and nephews even about late start times, overwhelmingly in support of late start times. I'd love to get your thoughts on start times in Wakefield. Do you support it? Do you not support it? And if you do support it, when do you think we should implement it?
So that's a great question. You know, just, we have been looking at this as an issue, as a matter for, in really, in an earnest way, for about a year and a half. Last school committee meeting, the administration and the Student Services Subcommittee had put on the table for us to consider three options. So there were three options that the school committee is pondering through our next meeting, when we will vote on one of the three. The first option, which is obvious, you know, to have no change, not to change anything. And the second option would be a delay in start time of 45 minutes at the high school and no change at the other two, at the elementary or the middle school. The third option is to delay high school for 60 minutes, for one hour, and have some modest adjustments at the other levels. So what the real big change looking at us about, you know, later start time for the high school is really, you know, the biggest driver. And that's the biggest driver of concerns, it's the biggest driver of what would be programmatically difficult. Do I support? You asked me if I, do I support a later start time? And the answer is, yes, I do. I think that the science is there, that, you know, as young people get older into their teen years, especially with all the complications in life today, getting a good night's sleep and getting rest and being well-prepared for school and to be engaged in your day is a critical part of that. To moderate some of the stress of the mornings, moderate some of the potential stress in the afternoons, I think can only help students with not only their brain development, but with their capacity to come well-prepared and well-rested for a school day. That being said, it's certainly true that there could be some adverse impacts, certainly at the beginning. Parents are going to have to have a different time to their day. Parents that have, you know, students at the other schools or other school levels have to be at their workplace, you know, very early. There certainly could be some struggles there. And the same goes for the end of the day, because the end of the day, if we start an hour later, we're going to, excuse, if we start an hour later, we're going to finish the day an hour later. So what does, you know, ending the day at 4:00 versus 2:30 or 3:00 o'clock mean? So there's lots of moving parts, and there's lots of challenges there. At the end of the day, I think we have to make the decision around what is best for kids and what is best for students being prepared to come to school. Fully realizing that not every, this is one of those many decisions that school committees need to make, that there isn't a, you aren't going to find 100% of the people that are on board are supportive or aren't going to have adversely impacted their lives. So we just need to balance that. Part of balancing that is your last question, when to potentially, you know, implement it. I think we would want to, we would want to implement it, or what we're looking at would be at least a year away, probably in September of calendar year '26, to give enough of a planning, you know, ramp, so people could, so families could appreciate what we're doing, give the administration of each of the buildings and the teacher leaders enough time to figure out what all the changes are going to be. One of the things that is to our advantage, out of some level of necessity, is when the new high school comes online, the new building, the very outline and design of that building, never mind the infrastructure of it, is going to, would be best served by a new high school schedule anyways. So that is before us in somewhere, whether, right now, the new high school is scheduled to open in January of '27. So if we implement the new change currently in this building, it may, we may be able to sort of float into the new schedule. But there's lots of moving parts there, but I think in general, we need to support what's best for teaching and learning for kids.
No, understood. So we're going to go from high school, and it's middle school, but mostly the high school, to the younger kids at the elementary level. So my friends in Greenwood have asked us, and I feel to bring up your point, it's been asked since I was on the school committee, many, when I had way more hair, you know, I looked less like you.
Me too.
Yeah. So they were asked, you know, they've seen now the Galvin, the high school, previously the Woodville and the Dolberg, and the Walton renovations. So they're the last school that hasn't seen major upgrades. We hear the complaints in the summer and in September about the lack of air conditioning, the bathroom in the building. What do you tell Greenwood families that are saying, "When's it going to be my time for some major renovations at my school?"
Well, as you know, I'm one of those.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, and you are.
So when my wife and I got married, we moved to Greenwood, we bought a home and we raised our two children there. Both of my children went to Greenwood School, then to Galvin, and have now graduated high school. But, so I have a great love, I have a great connection. My wife went to the Greenwood School as an elementary student back in the day. So, you know, I've got a great affection for that, for the school in particular, for the building. It is a rock-solid structure, that's one of the many advantages. I mean, buildings that were built, you know, decades ago or nearly 100 years ago are often, you know, better than, and we did this when we were negotiating about rebuilding the Galvin back in the time, that buildings that were built in the early 1900s were in better shape than those buildings built in the 1950s and '60s. But be that as it may, it is certainly not a modern building, not a modern school compared to the rest of town. It has charm, it has heart, it has an outstanding, you know, teaching staff, and it serves a terrific neighborhood of families and kids. So, you know, that being said, Greenwood School's turn is next, the time is next. And that's one of the reasons why I want to stay on the school committee, frankly, is to, I have worked very aggressively and sat on the school building committees for the Galvin School and for the high school, and I would want to, you know, see that through as well, to be able to work very hard to make sure that Greenwood's next and gets the turn that it deserves. I would also go out and say that the Greenwood, you know, neighborhood needs a school in that neighborhood. And I know that's, you know, we're looking down the road a bit, but it's a terrific question. And that needs to be next. I think one of the things that this town, one of the many things this town does well is to strategically plan, you know, capital projects, and we've been doing that for 30 years or more, knowing that when the financing for one project begins to come offline, there's a capacity within the existing tax levy to bring a new project online, thereby not necessarily, not to eliminate the need for an override vote to support, you know, school funding for buildings. But it can be as modest as possible. So with that in mind, that would need to be strategically done as well. Obviously, the high school would need to be up and running, and we would be seeing what is coming off, you know, the debt schedule at the time to be able to allow the Greenwood to rotate back on. But I would support in calendar year '26 that we put in an application to MSBA to begin to get into the pipeline for the Greenwood School.
Wonderful. And Tom, the final, I would say, I guess, school-specific question before you get into some more general fun ones, is I talked to a lot of parents who, I feel like I already know half your answer to this, who want to get to their kids into pre-K and early education, specifically at the Doyle. I think when I spoke to Superintendent Lyons last, he said there was a 60-family waitlist for pre-K. I guess, what are your thoughts, and this is the one, I feel like I know your answer, what are your thoughts on early education and its importance? And by early education, I mean before kindergarten. And then second, how do you think we should go about expanding, or if at all, expanding our ability to enroll more kids and more families to alleviate that waitlist?
That's a true question, and it's a heavy lift, but it's something that we need to continue to take on. You're right, when you're quoting Dr. Lyons, we did have, we turned families down this school year, back on, you know, back over the summer, the families that were on a waitlist, we wound up having not to be able to serve them. And there is a waitlist now for next September, and I'm sure unfortunately that there will be families on the waitlist that we won't be able to serve in the existing Doyle campus. What to do about that? Well, it's really, there's some reorgan, there's some shuffling that could be done to support, you know, the possibility of bringing, you know, pre-K, you know, programming into some of the other elementary schools. But those rooms are very tight as well. That's one of the, one of the things that we did this past year to be able to serve the number of families that we did do, is we have pre-K programming in the Woodville. Because there happened to be, at that time, enough space to be able to put an additional classroom in there. But as the population's going to continue to grow and expand and move and groove a little bit, we may not be able to sustain that. So there is enough space in terms of land on the Doyle campus. I think that's something that we seriously need to look at. Can we either expand the existing building or build some support structures, such as we've done at the Walton campus, to be able to support additional classroom space, additional teaching and learning spaces? I think that's what is before us in the near term, meaning the next couple of years, to be able to slow the necessity of turning families away, because that's not acceptable.
Understood. All right, so I've asked these questions of everybody we've interviewed, town council and school committee. You know, there are two just questions that I say they're interviewer's choice, because I like to get them, because I think they're interesting. So the first one, credit to Doug Butler last year, he hit it out of the park. The question is basically, what issue do you think you'll deal with in your term that nobody's talking about, that you don't see on the Facebook groups or in the item, that you'll deal with in your term? And Doug said Steve Mayo retiring within the next one to three years, and talk about hitting it out of the park.
There you go.
So Tom, is there an issue you think that we'll be dealing with that we're not talking about, that you're going to have to confront?
Well, I think that there are certainly issues that the community as a whole is not talking about that remain... that remain on the, on the front and the back burner of the school administration and the school committee. Uh, and some of those issues deserve a, you know, better, a, a better airing. Um, but that's just the, you know, that's just, you know, commonplace. I think, um, some of, some of the budget busters that that, uh, that we're seeing, um, that continue to drive some costs that are, that are fixed costs that we don't have, have control over, I think we need to begin to take, uh, the stronger looks at those and see if there are ways indeed that we can, we can adjust, uh, some of the spending that's, that's, or some of the expenses that are actually out of our control, the largest being the cost of insurances, for example. Cost of employee health insurance is, is dramatic and, and getting, and getting more challenging. Um, we want to obviously have a, a competitive and fair and good, uh, insurance policy for, for our staff. Um, and, but, um, the, the cost of health insurance is, is, is a real driver. Um, the, the changing technology, that's something that, that is on, that is on my radar screen. Uh, what is, uh, you know, what is AI in the classroom going to, going to look like?
That's a good one, actually. Nobody's written that up yet. Yeah.
Uh, and that's something that, that, it doesn't trouble me as much as it concerns me that we need to pay strong, strong attention to it. Because we are at a place, and we've probably been at a place for maybe a, at least a decade, whereas more and more sophisticated and tech-savvy kids are coming into classrooms that may be a tick ahead of, of the teachers and, and administrators with regard to the technology that, that, that they have readily available, right? So that's, that's, that's what I think that we're not talking about enough as a community.
Oh, I, Tom, you're picking up one of my favorite topics. Um, so now I'm going to go off a little bit, uh, but yeah, no, you're, you're not wrong. I, I think it's interesting with AI in general. Um, you know, I remember, again, I'm going to age myself, but when I was getting into high school and then law, uh, college, um, you know, Wikipedia, I don't want to say was relatively new, but was still new.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that was, I think, the first time where people said, the standard of an exam, even for a young person, can no longer be, here's a synopsis of what I read. It has to be more than what you can just get off Wikipedia. And I wonder how that's going to work in education now, because I think now it has to be, the standard can no longer be, what can you just type into AI? It has to be, how can you think? But, and I don't know what the answer is, but it's, I think it's a fascinating topic. Um, all right. The second question, if you don't mind me going out, so I'm going to be.
It's your show, brother. I'm, I'm, I'm here for the popcorn.
Yeah, uh, the other question I ask is, um, can you give us an example of a time you changed your mind?
Oh, wow. That's a good one. Uh, well, um...
Unless you have none.
No, no, because there are. I mean, one of, one of the things that I, that I, I honestly pride myself being, I work hard to be thoughtful. I work hard to be, uh, to be, to be engaged, um, and to, 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 to seek input. You know, feedback is a critically important part of that. So I, you know, the capacity to, 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 to change my mind as, as information becomes new or clearer, um, is there. I have no, I have no problem in changing my mind. I'm not so stuck on, um, you know, on a particular issue or a particular cause of, of being, of being right, if you will. Um, you know, so one thing that I've, I've worked hard to also do is to be, to be good to my, to my values and to be, and to represent well the, the, the family that I grew up in and the, the value structure that we had and our, our family of faith and our family of, uh, so I, I tried to be true to the, to the philosophy and the ethics that I grew up with without necessarily being so locked on a particular issue that, um, um, you know, that, that, uh, that I wouldn't be open to changing my mind. Some of the things over the course of years that are coming to mind with some, uh, some vagueness around specificity, about, have been some difficult budget decisions, for example, that we've, that we've had to make, that I have initially been supportive of, 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 of a budget, uh, matter, and then had to change my mind as we had to balance some of that. One thing that comes to mind is, is some of the, some of the world language positions, um, that we wound up needing to cut a handful of years ago. Uh, fortunately, we've been able to, you know, be able to moderate that and bring, bring positions back into the budget. But, um, you know, some of the, some of those things have been, have been more challenging. Uh, when we've been, you know, intending, uh, to ask, uh, of, of the town or ask of the townspeople to support a, a, a budget that was, that was, that was higher, um, than at the end of the day, we, we could really support uh, in terms of, of, you know, the taxpayers' willingness to support, even though I may have been supportive of, 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 of the spending, you know, uh, spending plan, um, with, with feedback and input and, and, and direction, that we've had to, we've had to, to pull back, uh, around expectations around either how soon we could, we could implement something um, or if we're going to be able to, to implement it at all. So really, some of the things around that are the, are the ones that come to mind. Well, that would be a great answer for you, man. I'm sorry about that.
No, no, that's, I know that's a good answer. Um, the other, um, finally, final question is, um, what's your favorite book?
My favorite book, um, probably The Discoverers by Daniel Bornstein. Uh, I've read that probably three times in the course of, uh, the last twenty years or more.
Well, favorite movie?
Oh, favorite movies is, is hearty. And I need a genre for a favorite movie because of, because of the, it's probably going to be a Star Trek movie, which isn't probably what you're looking for, so you went, but.
No, you can stick with that.
Favorite, uh, movie? Uh, well, so there's, there's the movies that, that you're cruising through and you stop and watch.
Yeah.
So Hunt for Red October.
Great movie.
We'll stop and watch that all the time. A Few Good Men, stop and watch that all the time. On, on the fun stuff, anything, any of the, any of the Star Trek things that are on, especially the, you know, the OG cast. I'm a OG guy.
Well, that's good. So next to his favorite TV show, and I'd say it's a Star Trek.
Oh, yeah, yeah, hands down.
That's awesome. Favorite band or musician?
Uh, the J. Gals Band was my, uh, was my, my, my band as a kid and, and, uh, you know, and still, still, still strong.
All right. Last but not least, favorite song?
Favorite song? Hmm. Uh, uh, it'd be a Billy Joel song, probably The Stranger.
That's a good choice.
The Stranger would be probably my, uh, that was, uh, that was a meaningful song. There's a, um, you know, David Bowie's Changes comes to mind too. Now, of course, I'm showing my age. I'm giving you all these nineteen seventies and eighties references, so I really, I really, uh, that's probably, those probably aren't.
No, it's, it's all good.
Top of the lances. I don't know if anyone's going to know those songs.
Well, we were talking about professional wrestling. I didn't ask your favorite wrestler.
No, which is good, because I, I'd have to say, I don't know what I'd say. Hulk Hogan? I don't even know. I.
No, I, it's all, all good. And then, um, so fine, very final question, and this one goes back to the beginning. Um, leave you with this. Any final comments or any final things you'd like to say to the people of Wakefield before we wrap up? And, um, I think they'll throw it to that one, camera one, when you do.
Okay. Um, well, I guess the answer to that, Anthony, would be really, you know, a thank you to, to the voters, uh, to the taxpayers and families and friends, um, who have given me the opportunity over the last number of years to, to serve on the school committee. Uh, it is, it has been an honor. It's something that I relish. It's something, it's work that I enjoy doing. Uh, it's work that I, I, I feel that I, I can contribute to, uh, continue to contribute to well. Um, and, and I think both my, you know, my breadth of experience in life and my profession, as well as my, my family and the types of other engagements that I've volunteered for has been part of a active Wakefield life. I just look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve on the school committee and, and just ask, uh, ask everyone for, for one of their votes on, on election day.
No, wonderful. You know what? I should have asked this question first, and I just thought of it now.
Okay.
Is favorite school committee member you ever served with?
Present company excluded?
No, England, no.
Well, there you go.
It should have been me. I, if you don't see, I should have asked it first. The question would have been a lot higher.
That's right.
Uh, no, Tom, seriously, thank you. Thank you again to WCAT and, um, and good luck. You just need one vote. So.
There you go.
It's all good. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.